Okay, why don't we get ourselves called to order here? We've got five trustees, which is definitely a quorum. Hey Eleanor. So Bonnie, for the notes, that would be 7:03 PM as I read it on my computer screen. And our first order of business on the agenda would be any additions and corrections. Is there anything that we should add or correct in the agenda this evening?
No, I was just gonna ask if Melissa wanted to make her presentation earlier in the evening if she had other businesses to take care of. It's up to her.
Thanks for asking. I'm fine. I'm fine. I don't mind hanging out if you don't mind having me.
Not at all.
We're thrilled ahead. Lose the mask here since I'm secreted away in spruce room. Okay. Then that will take us up to opportunity to for the public to address the board. Would any of our members of the public present this evening care to address the library board? Let's see, that would be Eliza, Jillian, Anna, Martha, Katie.
I have nothing to add. Me too.
Oh, here we go.
So 125 party was a big success.
Actually, Gillian, I had a long talk with Mark Stewart this week about a lot of different stuff, but he certainly saying your praises that but he's very grateful to you for all of your work and all of the library staff who they were just amazed to turn out and the support and the positive vibes coming from anyone connected with the library. So thank you all for all of your work. Very well done. And a lot of people want to see those fireworks in the future. So it's good news that we that may be possible.
It was a wonderful experience and I'm really grateful to Anna, Lizzie, Eric, Jenny and Eileen for all their help.
Great.
Sorry I'm late.
I got you recorded Bill.
Okay, thank you.
It's official. It's it'll be in writing.
Okay. I just went through a, okay, we're just gonna download this and it's like 10%, 15%.
You gotta get off a dial up. You have to get off a dial up.
I know that long beeping siren thing.
You missed that?
Both of them won't work in. Anyway.
My son can't believe I didn't have a cellphone until I graduated college. So I just bought him his third this year.
It looks like Eric lost connection. He dropped out. For some reason, it's not allowing me to make a secondary co-host. Let me see if I can try again. But now it will let me because there's it must be a max of two people. Weird.
Well, we can probably move ahead. Looking at the minutes from September 21st, any corrections or additions?
I had none.
If not, we have a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Sorry, who seconded? I got Matt as the first.
Wait for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Financial reports, the maybe we should wait for Eric. Why don't we?
He's back. He's back.
Hi Eric.
Sorry, the minutes.
It booted me. Thank you.
Minutes are approved, Eric.
All right, good deal. Thank you for keeping on, keeping on. Okay, that'll take us up to the next item on the agenda, which is the financial reports and I will share over and hopefully not get disconnected again. I am down in the spruce room and it tells me I have a full oh, that's not the one I want. It tells me I have all the bars I could possibly want. And yet it disconnected me.
Thank you.
That's technology for exposed. There we go. Okay, over to the financial reports. Items that I have for you this evening to highlight with the financial reports and there's actually a bunch. So first on the top here, you'll note that we did not receive any property tax revenue in September, but I can report that thus far in October, we have received a deposit of $206,105. So that is definitely noteworthy. That'll show up on the financial reports that the board sees next month. You can also note here on the financial report that we received our most recently awarded per capita grant that would have been awarded the spring after we applied for it in January of 2021. The amount received there is the 8,439. Received the check from the comptroller late in September. So happy to report that we received that. Okay, one to call out and call attention to here on building maintenance, the Ford 929 for building maintenance. If that seems high, it's because it is higher than usual. Usually even when we pay one of our big maintenance bills, which we did this month, the quarterly bill to Murphy and Miller for maintenance of the system, the HVAC system, it doesn't usually get that high. And that's because we've got a $1,100 bill in there to repair an actuator that burned out in the HVAC related to one of the ducts. You know, with such an automated system that we have, those actuators are important because otherwise the system can't function the way that it's supposed to, and that can get particularly interesting if the system doesn't really realize that it can't. So looking forward a bit more to next month's report. Also showing up in October is going to be a $2,000 donation that we received from the Quaspy Centennial Committee. That is was a thank you on their behalf for all the volunteer time and effort that was put in by library staff, in particular, Julian Chapman. I am also happy to report that we have finally been approved for our initial reimbursement for our PPE expenses during COVID-19. So at 75% of total, that should be a reimbursement around 3,584. I am hopeful that will apply again and that'll be any PPE expenses we've incurred since about last March.
So, excuse me, this first of all, where is this number showing up on this report I'm looking at?
3,584?
Yeah, what?
We've been approved for it. We haven't received it.
Okay, and you said since March that wouldn't, oh, since March of 21?
Yep, March 21.
All right, so the $3,000 was 20 into 21. So, okay, gotcha. Thank you. What's what's our expenditure estimate for 21?
We've been able to keep things going at a pretty frugal pace in terms of masks and other supplies that we've needed to purchase. So it should be quite a bit lower, but you know, reimbursement is reimbursement. So I'll take whatever they give me. I did ask for a pretty broad pretty broad range of reimbursement for a variety of things, actually quite a bit of staff time and tangential resources that we purchased due to COVID, but they didn't see fit to reimburse most of that. But you know, hey, you don't know if you don't ask, so.
Were there guidelines as to what what was reimbursable?
Yeah, but as always with when you get into the guidelines, there's a lot of gray area. Particularly when it got into the staffing stuff and you know how you define exactly what a COVID-related project and COVID-related time is. So I tried to be reasonable on some of that, but also you know, without going whole hogged, it just seemed like I was being an unreasonable greedy greedy soul here. Because really, I think in a lot of ways, you can make the case that just about everything that's been done workwise over the last year and a half has been somewhat COVID-related. So.
Eric, who is the who is the day that's reimbursing us?
FEMA.
FEMA, okay.
Yep.
And then just for my own notification, the PP expenses we are incurring are those for our constituents, for the patrons, or those to protect our staff? Is it, you know? The reason I ask is the middle school is giving out in excess of 100 masks a day to children. And you know that that to me, I hope we're not in that situation. No, no issues with protecting our staff, but hopefully our patrons are not coming in and grabbing boxes of masks or things like that.
Not boxes. We we do have masks that we make available to patrons who have forgotten theirs. We are not going through anywhere near that many 100 a day, not even close, probably more like 100 at a month, maybe. Eliza, you're the one that orders those. What's our burn rate?
You know, I haven't actually done the calculations on the burn rate, but I've probably ordered a round of children's masks and a round of adult masks in the last month. So it's about 200 each time I order it.
So at a guess, perhaps about 200 a month.
It's gotten a lot better since there was a mandate in place.
Yep. And we do get a pretty good deal on those through the village as as well.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, the the bottom line is that right now we are 43.35% expended at 5/12ths of the way through the fiscal year. Which is right where I would expect us to be. So any additional questions on financial reports? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve.
I moved to approve the September 2021 financial reports.
I'll second.
That was Janie. Yep, thank you.
And we will do a roll call vote because we've we're approving some cash. Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Zodi.
Hi.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
And trustee Hayes.
Hi.
And I'm forgetting somebody. Trustee Graziano.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. Checks are approved.
Eric, could we have a status at the next meeting on the state grant that we are waiting so enthusiastically for?
Absolutely. I will give give Susan Morrison's office another one of sure poke and see if they have any new information.
Be sure we are up to date on our expenditures and let her know that we are anticipating additional.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Will do. Okay. And that is going to take us over to the always exciting checks. Scroll down to those.
Oh, did you get those signatures today, Eric?
I did. Janie stopped by and lent a signature yesterday morning.
Okay, thanks, Janie.
You're welcome.
Good to have such diligent and enthusiastic trustee officers. You guys were all willing to come in. So it was.
Bonnie and I were like steps away. I was out for a walk.
Okay, couple to draw attention to in the checks. Mission Square. That is actually a name that you're going to be seeing on the check dispersment reports going forward. That is the new vantage point. And when I say new vantage point, we did not find a new company to manage our 457 plan. They just rebranded themselves. So Vantage Point has become Mission Square. So you can expect to see that name on the reports here as we have usually had Vantage Point in the past.
Remind me what the 457 plan is?
It's a deferred compensation plan. Okay, and then the other one that I have a mark to draw attention to is the always thrilling Granite Telecommunications Utility Bill. This one actually seems to be leveling out. The some of the quirks in the previous bills, we've got straightened away. We got a few miscommunications worked out. This 37157 that should be about normal as far as what we'll see now for the utility bill for the phones going forward.
Are we still realizing a savings over access one?
Very much so. By the time last fall, when we transitioned away from access one, our average bill was in the 750 to 850 per month range. So this is quite a bit better still. They've got a lot of room to do better than access one, but I'm still happy where they leveled out.
Eric, back to Mission Square real quick. Will that number go down since we have a recent retirement?
It will not.
Will not, right?
Because it's an optional program. So employees have the have the option to put a portion of their paycheck into that as an investment. We only have one staff member that's currently opting to do that, and it wasn't the one that retired.
Okay.
And also as a deferred compensation, it's basically a wash, even though the check shows up as funds because what happens is that there's a certain amount of funds that are withheld from being paid to the person when the payroll is run, but then that amount needs to be written as a check to go to the deferred compensation vendor, Mission Square.
Thanks.
No problem. Any other check questions? Okay, not hearing any. I would look for a motion to approve the checks. Let me give you the range here. The range for the checks is 14918 to 14927 and then 14929 to 14954.
I moved to accept the September monthly checks, 14918 to 14927, 14929 to 14954.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Got it.
All right, and we'll do a roll call vote. Okay. Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Graziano.
Hi.
Trustee Zodi.
Hi.
And trustee Hayes.
Hi.
All right, checks are approved. And that will take us on to committee reports. And we did not actually have any committees that met this month, though we have some things that are probably of note related to the committees. Building and grounds. We had did have a initial planning meeting with Sean Kelly and the interior designer, I forget the name, from Angberg Anderson, as well as Jason from Shells McNutt, who's going to be the onsite manager for the project, the that being the Stroll Reading Room project. So that was a good productive initial meeting. Janie, do you have anything BNG wise to add?
Um, not to what you just described. The only thing that I was curious about, I drove over one of these the other day and it made me think, are we going to still put books at the entrance to the parking lot south of the building?
We are continuing to investigate the possibilities.
Because I've seen some that you can you know, you just kind of bolt into the
Yeah.
Asphalt.
It does require a certain amount of drilling into the asphalt.
Yeah.
So want to be sure that whatever we do is sustainable and it isn't going to damage anything.
Yeah, I can understand why you might be reluctant to drill into asphalt, but.
I can I can add that we are, I think, probably going to be moving forward with some sort of signage along the the back fence to, you know, again, call out to people once they're into the parking lot that, you know, hey, this is staff parking back here. We've had particularly on Friday when things have gotten really busy downtown while we've been having all the construction that's been happening.
Oh, sure.
A growing number of folks that have shown interest in parking back there. But I should mention as well that Anna Fifehouse designed for us a neat little staff parking sticker that we can all put on our cars so that we can easily recognize vehicles that are not supposed to be back there when they show up. So we're we're clipping along. We haven't I haven't seen our infamous white truck breezing through lately. So we'll see.
Is that the the truck from church across the street?
Yes.
Because I've seen it parked in that extra lot across Scranton. It seems to be where it's living now. So.
Yep.
Is that? Hi, has is that time to come? It's true?
Yes, it is.
No, well, I'd happily have a chat with him. I'm sure he's not trying hard to.
I don't think so. I would be surprised if he if it was. I just don't know him well enough to approach him about something like that and I haven't been able to flag him down.
Good to know. Thank you.
Thank you. If you're able to talk with him, that would be.
Yeah, unfortunately, I just saw the other day, which I'd known that, but yeah, I definitely will will mention it when I see him.
Yeah.
We've done it for years. It's not a problem. So I'll mention it.
He's a good guy. He'll be receptive, I think.
Sounds good.
He'll be flattered to know that he was mentioned in a public meeting.
Well, I always hear fabulous things about him.
Absolutely.
Okay. I do have an update finance committee wise on some things that have been sent out. I can jump in on that unless you want to jump in ahead of me, Bill.
No, no, that's okay. I know. I know. We've got our meeting set up for November 2nd, so.
For November 2nd and I'm going to try and have I will be present and maybe a member to the the finance committee as well at the Village Finance Committee meeting on October the 25th at 5:30 PM. We usually make an effort to have a presence there when they discuss their levy and what they're going to do because it is helpful in terms of coordination to know what they're thinking, what challenges they're facing and what they're thinking they'll do with with their levy. And then we're able to take that into consideration as a collaborative member of the local taxing body.
I assume that's a virtual meeting.
It is going to be a hybrid meeting and I am strongly leaning towards attending via Zoom myself unless they change it. When they do these meetings, the committee meetings that are ahead of the the meetings of the whole, the regular Monday meetings that they do, they're almost always down in that boardroom. And given the number of people that usually attend these, the finance committee meetings for the levy. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of people that they were packing in there when we were attending those pre-COVID. So that feels a little unlikely to be a good idea during a pandemic. So I will probably attend via Zoom since it's an option.
Yeah.
So the the, as you probably guessed from from that statement as well, the main discussion item for the finance committee will be bump it up, but the the loving for the next fiscal year, for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. Okay. And I am going to be working to set up an HR committee meeting as well. One that's a bit delayed. So I had been working towards putting together an HR committee packet salary information so that that was a discussion that we could have ahead of the levy conversation. But then I had a, you know, big retirement that happened and that kind of threw a wrench into the a lot of the calculations. So but I do want to be sure that we have that conversation and I also have information to put in front of the committee as as far as, you know, some necessary steps, necessary things, I think we need to take a look at doing with the some of the flexibility that we are currently have to hand having had a major retirement. So that'll be a meeting I'll be sending out an email about shortly. We are going to be having an intergovernmental agreement committee meeting. It looks like that's going to be set for next week. So waiting for one person to reply to the doodle poll. Jenny, I think that's.
I see stroh here on this printout. So who is on the?
You are right. That is that is Janie and Jenny.
Okay.
I need to get that updated. So for for the intergovernmental agreement committee, getting a meeting together besides being overdue to have one, the museum very much wants to discuss the disposition and the distribution of the the funds related to the memorial bricks in front of the library. So that will be, I think, probably the the big conversation item there, though I do also want to if time allows, discuss the chair, the Santa chair that we are currently storing for them.
Also, before the meeting, would you double check with Eileen and get the friend's opinion on the bricks?
Yes.
You have that going in the meeting?
Yeah. They didn't, Eileen sent me a couple sent me a couple emails after their meeting on Saturday, but none of them pertain to the bricks. They seem to be they seem to be receptive to the idea that we had put forward as far as resolving that. So but I will double check because I definitely don't want to sit down at that intergovernmental agreement committee meeting and you know, then put that forward and then have Eileen state that she, well, why are you doing this? I thought it was a terrible idea. Hard pass. Okay, and technology committee. And technology committee, technology committee did not meet this month, but has had a lot going on. Matt, do you want to do an update for technology committee?
Yep. So the technology committee has, as, as we shared previously, has settled on the libraries that we wanted to canvas. We've divvy those up among the committee members and have been working with the staff to schedule those meetings. Bonnie in particular, I think, has made some, some headway on actually going out to meetings. And Bonnie, not to put you on, on the spot, but trustee Shaw, would, would you be willing to share any feedback or insights there?
Sure, of course. Thanks, Matt. So just yesterday, myself and three of the library staff members, two of whom are on the call right now, paid a visit to the Deerfield Library and the director there, Amy Peterson, was very welcoming. And we spent almost an hour and a half at the library, primarily talking about some of the technology that they've deployed both staff technology, software, hardware, as well as technology that's patron facing. We also got a tour of their maker space. So the one thing that I'll comment on is, you know, for me, my knowledge of what a maker space is, is very, very small. It got a lot broader, you know, seeing it, feeling it, you know, being, being in it. The space includes arts and crafts as well as technology, as well as virtual reality games, as well as equipment to convert VCR tapes or even, I think, eight millimeter films onto more durable media, more current media. So I was really struck in the maker space by the vast array of equipment that's available to not only Deerfield residents, but anyone who wants to go into that maker space can go in there. You just have to call ahead and make an appointment, so it's open to non-Dearfield residents as well. Um, and I'll just pause there because, you know, I'm, I'm going to type up my, my notes, share them with Eliza, Martha and Lawrence, who accompanied me and had much more like specific technical questions. So I'll write up those notes, we'll share them among the participants and then share them with, with the committee. It's just a net of one, right, Matt? As Mike, as you mentioned, we're going to a number of different libraries over the course of the year. And I actually have Northbrook penciled in for the first half of November. So that'll be our, the second, the second visit that we do. Eliza or Martha, anything you wanted to add? I think you gave a good overview.
Yes, I agree.
We've, we've also got, Gillian and Katie and I are going into Prospect Heights on Monday. So we've got that set up with Alex Todd and talked to him yesterday and, and they're all set and we're just trying to have people there that can match up to, to what Gillian and Katie are looking for. So we'll have that one completed then next Monday. And I'll do the same thing that Bonnie's will do, we'll just, we'll write up something and then circulate it and add to it and then share it with the rest of the group.
Good deal.
Just one footnote to other committee members or those going on meetings. One thing that's kind of piqued my interest lately is any virtual reality or augmented reality tools that these libraries are offering to their, to their constituents. It was just recently as yesterday, everyone's favorite social media whipping boy, Mark Zuckerberg, indicated that Facebook will be hiring, I think upwards of 10,000 or 15,000 folks to focus on their vision of what a metaverse will constitute. And while this has a lot of like potentially social implications, you have, you, a metaverse is sort of this virtual reality universe where you have an avatar as opposed to a, you know, a physical representation of yourself and can interact in a variety of ways. But where the application is, I think, in particular from, from a learning and, and education standpoint in line with the library's goals is for kind of the next, the next phase of, you know, our Zoom and Teams and whatnot adoption. So be another way to use technology to integrate disparate working units or disparate task holders to work together. So your architect and your contractor may collaborate in a, in a metaverse as opposed to via email and Zoom calls. So it's just something to potentially add to your punch list if it's not already on there.
I am thrilled that the term metaverse came up in the meeting tonight.
Why is that?
It's a great word.
A great word, yeah.
Yeah.
Everything's meta.
Indeed.
I read that article too. I was pretty struck by the implications for education.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're using it in industry now where you can do safety training. You just go into a factory and you walk around and look for areas where that the hazardous waste or, or safety issues and the same thing with, as, as Matt said, you could set up a boardroom and you're all around the boardroom and, and you can literally talk things around or to walk into any kind of building or, or design to, to look around. It's very fascinating.
Yeah. You know, certainly with, with Slack and then if we switch to Teams, CDI would like us to do, you know, with maybe that down the, the line, but you know, I was, I was, I was fascinated by the, you know, the, the, the theory, but then also the, you know, the movement of the practical. Because I think there's been so much movement on this front in the last year and just kind of everybody's day to day work life in this. And, you know, being able to, you know, like we do really often now on, on staff with, with the resources that we have. You know, we'll just on the fly set up a group discussion about something. You know, and it's as easy as clicking on a couple of names and sending, you know, creating a new chat thread that just involves a select group of people and you can pull it aside and name it and it's just that easy as, as far as getting people together and, you know, organize and shifting documents and information and having conversations. Yeah. Where we're headed is pretty amazing, personal opinion, in, in terms of collaboration on things.
Collaboration, business applications, you know, I have a, I'm working on a project with some partners where we're trying to bring augmented reality to the home improvement space. So rather than some, have someone come in to, you know, give you sketches and mockups. You would put on a pair of glasses and see your.
Just give you an overlay. That would be so cool.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, that would be, wow, that, that, that's something.
Thank you for validating the idea.
Okay. I think that probably takes us to the end on tech.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We really only have one item of new business tonight. Next month we'll have the levy discussion. That'll be on the agenda. This month, we've got a intergovernmental agreement on the table to join a group called Illinois Libraries Present. So this is actually one that represents an outcome of the past year. So one of the things that was very much realized over the last year was that there were a lot of things that became possible with having to switch so much of our programming to be online. One of those was that libraries could work together much more efficiently to create cost efficiencies by contracting for programs that could be available to multiple libraries or that could be made available more cost effectively by contracting for them for multiple instances. But signing the contract as a collective purchasing unit rather than as individual libraries. So the organization here on the North Shore that has kind of been the, one of the results of that and is aiming to keep that collaboration moving forward is Illinois Libraries Present. And this actually, the director at Northbrook, Kate Hall, Bonnie, who you'll be having a chance to, to meet, is one of the main providers of impetus for this. But it's basically aims to provide high quality programming at reduced costs, maximizing using both virtual event platforms and the collective buying power of the members. And right now it's in sort of a test phase for the next about nine months. From now to about June of 2022, I believe they aim to provide one to two programs that would be available to the patrons of member libraries each month. Given the scale that they have for membership over that time, we fall into the range of being able to subscribe for $200 and would potentially, I think, get a lot for a, a pretty modest buy-in fee. So is there the possibility that you know, things get substantially better pandemic wise and we see a real heavy drop off in virtual programming? It's a possibility, but particularly over the winter months, I feel like we've seen enough interest in virtual programming to suggest that there's going to be some interest that's going to be carried forward. And I think the, the buy-in here as, as far as what we would need to chip in for this initial phase of this program is pretty modest. And also the pandemic is still happening. Heaven help us.
Can you give us some examples of something that we might be seeing on this virtual programming?
Yes.
Eric, do you want me to hop in here?
That would be great.
Right, so this is adult programming. It's mostly focused on two areas. The first, like Eric mentioned, is people that are or organizations that are too expensive for one library. So a lot of bigger name authors, we just had the Richard Rothstein Color of Law event and that was about 60 libraries splitting the cost for him. So similar things like that. The other main focus that they've stated is on EDI focused programming. So those are their two main goals for this January to June pilot program is again, the cost splitting, large name authors with an additional focus on equity, diversity and inclusion programming.
And Anna, I'd like to add that you know, the, the quality of that event, I, I don't, you know, it may not have been through Illinois Libraries Present, but despite the fact that there were 800 people on the Zoom and 50 to 60 different libraries, the, the quality of the transmission, the speed with which they went through Q and A, it was, it was a really good program. So I, I would certainly think that this $200 would be a great investment because again, I think the profile of the content we would be able to provide, the patrons of Lake Bluff Library would be almost unparalleled.
Absolutely. It's a wonderful price for what is at least a guarantee of a minimum of six programs for those six months.
And we, that's just amazing. It makes so much sense for a small library like us to be in a consortium like this. Because the, the cost and logistics of getting that quality of programming, you know, just in our library, it is prohibitive. And this certainly spreads it around and I, I don't know about everybody else, but my opinion is that having having things available through your computer is going to continue to be very popular, especially during bad weather months.
Great.
The older I get, the less I like to go out at night. And I'm sure I'm not alone in that, so.
Well, the, the programming that they do, will that also be available for other people to go access after they miss the particular event that's going on?
Recordings are going to be on a by presenter basis. That's pretty necessary to make it function because a lot of presenters have either additional fees for a recording or they'll have restrictions as far as some presenters use copyrighted content that's only available in that live presentation and would violate copyright afterwards, so. And they, they will make them available when they can, is what they've stated, so.
No, I'm totally in favor of this. I think it's a great idea.
Now, I, I just want to be sure because again, the, I'm trying to reconcile the $200. That's, that's sort of a the admission fee and then there'll be, will there be an additional fee per event?
No, it is 200 and we get to opt into as many programs as we want for that period.
Yeah.
That's a bargain.
Yeah, yes.
And by we, you're saying any member of patrons from our library?
Yeah, we pay the $200 and then what our patrons get is free access then to, to all the programs that Illinois Libraries Presents puts together between now and June 2022.
Are these typically at night or are they varied in terms of?
That was my first question for them was when they're looking to schedule and they have stated it will be the seven o'clock hour, usually Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday nights. So with the flexibility of this, if something conflicts with the program I've already scheduled, then we just don't opt into that one that night. And you know, we aren't losing out. We also will get access through this to their Zoom webinar. So libraries will have the option, if we ever needed to host an event with enough people for a webinar, we could pay $25 to get it for that night. Which could potentially be very helpful if we have a large event come up.
Sure.
I have, I have one reservation. I, I mean, in principle, I'm strongly in favor of, you know, collective buying power and, and bringing diverse resources to our constituents. But because what gives me pause in this statement here is the first bullet. Are, are we getting too political with social justice DEI issues? If that's the focus of these, of these programming.
It's in line with our stated, so we had several EDI committee meetings earlier this year and we stated several goals, one of which was to provide EDI programming. So it is in line with an intended and pre-stated goal of the library.
And the, the library does very much aim to provide topical programming. And whether you love it or hate it, the EDI issues are very much topical. So whether in person or virtual, it, it is something that's on the, the, the tab list is something that we would be looking to have somebody in, but I, I do think that you know, I, I honor the, the, the concern and, you know, not wanting to you know, jump into a political quagmire.
Yeah, I just don't want to get some, you know, someone that's too extreme and, and risk fallout or god knows what else from that. We've all seen what's happening at school board meetings.
Yeah.
They will most likely be in line with the Richard Rothstein program that Bonnie attended last week, which was yes, a social justice program, but I, I wouldn't say was antagonizing in a political way at all.
No, we're, we're an informational organization, so you know, the, the library programs that we and other libraries are offering tend to be very much on that front. So it's, ever wonder what, you know, happened in Tulsa 100 years ago? Well, here's an informational program that'll give you some of the details about what happened. Things like that, or the history of, you know, banking decisions and redlining and, and things like that, rather than anybody coming in to be a, you know. anybody coming in to be a, you know, more opinion based. That's not really what we're here for. We're information.
Okay.
And I do think as well that you know, part of the advantage here of getting in on the initial six months, since this is something that's just getting up and running would be if we did take a look at it and we felt that the the programs were not really what we if we weren't keen on the content, we can always back out after that time. Call it a trial and we could leave it at that.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
So I did review with with Anna and Anna had a number of really good questions that she put to the 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 folks who are responsible for getting this organized. And I also ran the agreement past our legal counsel to make sure that there wasn't anything in there that that they felt was off base or hinky. So after doing both of that, both those, I I do think that this is a good one to give. Give it a shot. And my recommendation would be that we approve the agreement. And we can circle back to it June 2022 and fingers crossed it'll prove to be a great success. Worst case, you know, it's a pretty small price to pay for opting into something that could be pretty big.
Well, if there's no more discussion, I would be happy to move that the agreement be approved.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
Second from Trustee Hayes, because it is an agreement that does have a cost attached to it. We'll do a quick roll call vote. Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee George.
Hi.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustees Audi.
Is abstaining an option? No. I'll go with I. That's fine.
Okay. Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Graziano.
Hi.
Motion carries.
What one thing, Eric, just on the goals of the document presented, it says DEI instead of EDI.
Yeah, they just arranged, they rearranged the letters.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm not sure why. Yes. Scroll down here. I'll print out a copy and I'll put it in the the folder behind the main desk. And I think it needs okay, no, it just needs, it just needs you. Doesn't need January, it doesn't need Bonnie as well.
Does it? What about?
Just the president.
That's not us, just the
That's not us.
Okay.
Okay. And that is going to take us up to the old business and
And Matt, just glancing a little bit further on that contract, and it does say that library reserves may terminate this contract at any time, whether that costs. So, you know.
If we need to distance ourselves, we can.
Yeah. If yeah, i- if for whatever reason and knowing Kate, who's the director at Northbrook and has been kind of the main push to get this going. I would be surprised if there was anybody that they got in that was, you know, really off the wall. But yeah, we would have the option and just drop it.
Thanks, Trudy.
And then I think Melissa, we're up to your report.
Okay, thanks, Eric. I wanted to give everybody some new information about what we're doing for the Capitol Campaign. We're benefiting from some collaboration. Scott Butler, who a lot of you may remember from boardwork, has joined John Heinzlman and I in some of our strategy meetings and Scott has a long career in marketing and advertising. So he's helping us with our messaging. We had talked about putting together our information and getting our ducks in a row and reaching out to our top prospects. Those are individuals with combined means and interest. In in the interest of being efficient and get word out more broadly to this group, this special group of people. We've decided to have small group meetings, one or two to begin with, and we will probably extend invitations to about 25 people at a time. We've got a packet of material ready that we can share with them at that time. And we're going to meet in the Youth Services Department and do a presentation for them. We'll have our renderings, the renderings that were done by Enberg Anderson blown up and up for view. I'm excited that Jake Jarvey has agreed to help us with some multimedia to incorporate the personal narrative of the Capitol Campaign, which is really important. It's very important not only to introduce the Capitol Campaign to people and let them know why we're doing it, why it's important to get into the library and why it's important to give now. But we can really incorporate a lot of different perspectives with multimedia. So I'm really grateful to Eliza and Jake for making this possible. The timeline for these meetings is mid-November. I think we'll start with two and we'll give our invitees an option to pick which date works best for them. And we'll present. We are not making an ask at these meetings. This is really just to get people up to date and engaged and enthusiastic about the program. I think find out right there that evening if we have people's attention. We will follow up with individuals soon after, a week after, two weeks after. Timing is kind of tight because for a lot of these people that we're inviting, they are going to camp for their winter residence. And also, we're going to back up into the holidays. So the next couple of weeks are important, but I'm very, very excited about this plan. I love the efficiency of it. I'm really excited to be talking about the Capitol Campaign in a group dynamic. It takes one or two enthusiastic attendees to really get some movement in the entire group. So I'm very much looking forward to this. We spoke to the Friends this past weekend about including some information about the Capitol Campaign in their annual letter. No word on that yet. And we also asked them if they would consider sponsoring the showpiece item in the Stroh Reading Room, the fireplace. We've asked the Friends to consider sponsoring that fireplace. So they're going to mull that over. And another collaborative pro- program that I'm working on with Jen Graziano is a volunteer opportunity for the library that serves a lot of purposes, but the one that concerns me most is grooming. So Jen has been fantastic in sourcing other structures and other libraries to ask people to volunteer. We're thinking about having something very small so that we can, we can get it up and running and keep it sustainable. And since the reading to youth opportunities are so popular, we're thinking about doing something like that. But I hope to have more to come on this soon and hopefully Jen and I can demonstrate how this would all work for somebody who's interested in volunteering. That's my report. Can I answer any questions?
Hey, Melissa, it's Bonnie. For the for the notes I was taking, I think I I missed something. You said that the volunteer opportunity is, and I thought I heard grooming.
Yes. So yeah. In like in a development department, there are always opportunities for patrons or constituents to volunteer, to bring them into the space or into the organization for which you want them to support in the chair. So because we don't have a very strong giving base at the library, I don't have like a pool of people to return to time and time again to ask for money. By bringing people in to have a volunteer experience, an opportunity for them to invest their time and their energy, hopefully have a positive experience, and then return and do it again, maybe look for additional opportunities to volunteer or different ways to get involved with the library. Ideally, this leads to giving behavior. And so that's why I said grooming. We will be grooming these volunteers to be givers.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Makes sense.
You're welcome.
Melissa, as always, thank you for all your putting a lot of hours and a lot of time, a lot of thought, a lot of energy. So thank you for all that.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for your support, Kathy. It's I I'm really looking forward to to seeing how this works out.
We all are.
All right. Thank you. All right. Real quick on the director's report. I want to underline again what a great job Jillian did working with the Quasque Centennial Committee. And I can also add in that when the Friends met at their their last meeting this past Saturday, that they did approve adding an additional $2,000 in support for programming at the library, which is much appreciated. It's an arrangement that worked well when they gave us $2,000 to expend on various programs back in 2019, which we've now spent through. And it's particularly appreciated because programming expenses have been on the rise. So that is all that I would draw a circle to other than October the 29th, Friday, October the 29th at 6:30 PM is going to be the installation of the Memorial Statuary for Donna Williams.
Just hit that date and time again, please.
October 29th at 6:30 PM.
It's a Friday, I believe.
It'll be a Friday just after we close.
Yep.
So on that note, is there anything else that anyone would like to jump in and say or add here at the end of the meeting? Otherwise, I would look for motion to adjourn. Motion from second from Bonnie. All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 8:06 PM.
Okay.
All right, all. Thank you.
Everybody.
Have a good evening.
Good night.